Hello everyone, and welcome to another episode of Selling Greenville, your favorite real estate podcast here in Greenville, South Carolina. I'm your host as always, Stan McKeon Realtor, right here in Greenville, and you can find all of my contact information in the show notes. If you need to reach out to me for any of your local real estate needs, just reminders always, if you like this content and you don't want to miss it, please subscribe to the show. If you're on YouTube, you can hit the little, I think it was like a little bell button, hit the bell button. If you're on your Apple Podcasts, there's like a follower or subscribe button, whatever. Every podcast app has a different option, a different way of doing it. So please do that. If you can leave a rating or review, that would be fantastic as well. Really appreciate you guys. Thank you guys as always for watching and listening. Today is actually a first for the Selling Greenville podcast. I have had on people involved in politics before on the show, but we've actually never had someone on the show who's in the middle of a campaign. That's changing today as I will be interviewing someone running for Greenville City Council. Now, I'll introduce our guest in just a moment, but since this is a first, I need to clarify something because if I don't, I'll have people in my direct messages telling me that I'm doing bad things. So here's my clarification. Having a guest on my show does not constitute an endorsement either by me or by any groups that I'm affiliated with. And that goes back to anyone that I've had on the show, anyone that I will have on in the future. I really, that's just not how I operate. I don't, I don't have people on the show in order to try to pump them up specifically. If I have a guest on the show, it's either because I have a pre-existing relationship with them, or because they reached out to me to come on the show. That's really how this works. So I've not up to this point even turned down any politicians or candidates that I've asked to come on to the show. I have had, there was one council person a while back that reached out and said that they were willing to come on the show. And, but there weren't any specifics and nothing ever came to fruition, but I was willing to have them on the show. So these sorts of things happened. So long story short, I'm not playing any favorites when I have someone on here. And if you don't know me, I'll just say this, my political beliefs are pretty amorphous. I haven't connected with any politicians in our area or elsewhere that I agree with 100% on anything. And you probably know that if you're, if you're a longtime listener of the show. And if you're a listener of the show, you know, I'm not going to be disagreeable or try to do any gotchas or anything like that. So if you want content where people are doing that, there is tons of that out there. So go ahead and, and do some searches for controversial podcasts. There's like 10 million of those out there. All right. So now we're past all the disclaimers that I have to put out there. We have a very special guest, Tina Belgie, who's running for an open at-large seat in Greenville City Council. And Tina is a third generation Green Billion who has an extensive background in local real estate related issues, having served as a director with the Greenville Housing Fund, as a Greenville County Planner. And she currently serves as the founder of Catalyst Community Consulting, which advocates for affordable housing planning, as well as community engagement in Greenville and in other areas. So she's running for office, but tons of overlap with the main thing that we're concerned about here with real estate. And of course, everything that happens in the city of Greenville impacts Greenville real estate as well. So this will all flow in really nicely. So I'm really excited to have Tina. So Tina, welcome to the show.
Thank you so much, Stan. I appreciate you having me.
Absolutely. So one thing that is unique about the city of Greenville, although the, the city population pales in comparison to Greenville County, I think the city is roughly 10%, a very ballpark figure of, of the county. A lot of us in the county spend a substantial amount of time in the city, which is really not the case in, in, I feel like a lot of other areas. And particularly downtown, of course, because we have such an amazing downtown, it's always getting all these, all these awards, all these, you know, everyone wants to say something about downtown Greenville. So we'll just start with that. What are some things that are happening in downtown in the upcoming years that have you excited?
Yeah. Well, yeah, you're right. It's nearly 10%. So we have 75,000 people in the city. And our population is getting up around six, 650 in the county. So yeah, we're quick on our way to 10. Yeah, for downtown, I mean, there've been a lot of improvements over the years. I'm really excited about Bonsacore Wellness Arena, or the BiLO Center, as you may know it. The improvements around there, it's gonna have some outside concert space. Same with True Line is another music area venue that's popping up kind of around Unity Park area. And really just, I think utilizing a lot of passive recreation space in the past that we had not really focused on. So good stuff downtown. I mean, personally, I'm really excited as an at-large member to focus away from downtown, because I think we've had so much growth and we can handle a lot of growth downtown. I want our CBD or Commercial Business District to keep thriving and focusing density in those areas. But I'm even more excited to grow the nodes in our city that were developed in the 2040 plan, which I helped just participate when I was at the Housing Fund with. So I would love to have little mini downtowns.
Do you have specific areas that you have in mind? Like when you, when you say something like that?
Yeah.
I know you can't make any promises, right?
Oh, no, no, no.
Because it takes a whole council and a mayor and all of that. You're just one person.
Certainly does. It certainly does. But there's already, you know, an archetype and map for these nodes on the Greenville 2040 plan. So it's from five years ago. Our city decided these are going to be the areas that we can handle growth and we want to manage it. And all I want to bring to the table is incentivizing, actually building incentives for those areas. We have zoning, of course, which helps direct some growth. But if we want, you know, adaptive reuse of vacant buildings or some more affordability in certain nodes, or you want some more economic development, some small businesses to thrive as, you know, we see some leaving downtown, going to other areas, we need some incentives around it. So that's my goal. Some of the main ones I think about are here on Pleasantburg, where I am, and you know, Rutherford, kind of Wade Hampton, end of Cherrydale area entering the city. Lots of opportunity for Pleasantburg. I mean, we need some love, like it's pretty.
That's it. That's the area that I love. I live right over by Wade Hampton High School.
Okay. So we're not far. We're probably neighbors.
Yep. I'm just outside of the city.
Okay. You're just outside. Yeah. I'm just on the very edge. Uh, yeah, we need some love on that, on that end, South Pleasantburg as well. Lawrence Road, McAllister Square, you know, connecting out to CUICAR and Verde. There's a whole Lawrence Road, you know, plan. So I think all those things would, you know, provide some, some capacity. Anywhere you have like a four or five lane road, you know, versus like some, some development, we're focusing on like two lane roads. And I'm like, kidding, anxious.
So a lot of, interestingly, a lot of people that, that like to bike, as in cycling, listen to the show, is obviously the city has been, has done a good job of being bike friendly. I think there's still some, some ways that we could do that better. But outside of downtown, what is the push in the city for, for making, you know, those nodes that you're talking about more bikeable?
Yeah. I mean massively. So my friend, her sister got hit a few months ago in Overbrook, which is kind of a growing, I'd say, small little node area. Yeah. I mean, it's, I cross Wade Hampton, Overbrook all the time to bike. And it's going down. It's a pain coming back. But no, it's not safe. People got hit. Pedestrian crossed from West Greenville a few weeks ago also was hit. And so biking and ped is super needed in these, in these nodes, because you're connecting neighborhoods to these little nodes, right?
Yep.
And you're wanting to make sure everything's interconnected. Getting to downtown should be easy by bike. Everyone is driving electric bikes now. Like it's a huge thing.
Yeah.
I love to see it personally. I'm a big fan of actually protecting a bike lane, having cement and then having, you know, a little more green space on the side, if not having some, you know, real separation of some kind, boustiers, something.
Aren't they gonna do some of that, like around, like the, the airport, the downtown airport did a whole thing, a whole like community involvement thing? Aren't they planning to do some of that around there?
They are around there. And then also there are different parts of the city still, still yet to come. I believe Pendleton Street will have some more. And I think over time, I hope this, we'll see the city take on more roads to manage from the state. That's the biggest issue. It's like the city owns, or the state owns like 60 to 80% of the roads, depending where you're at.
Yeah, that was, that's a topic that we might, that we may hit on later, because obviously the roads, they always get brought up, more so in county than city related things, but, but it's, it's kind of hard to, you know, when, when the city of Greenville has so much influence within the county, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to divorce the two, I feel like at least.
No, it is totally.
And you, so you alluded to a few things, but I'll just ask you pointedly, what are some things you would improve downtown? Just before we focus away from downtown, I, I do want to make sure we hit on a few downtown related things. Since again, a lot of my listeners are out of state people, they're, they're not going to know where all these different, you know, McAllister Square and whatnot is, but they do know what downtown is. So I want to make sure that we get them the red meat that they need.
Well, definitely our traffic management downtown. There are some improvements. I know I went to a meeting the other day about, you know, downtown traffic plan. And so that is in the works. Sorry, my dog, my dog's purring.
I can't, we, I don't think we can hear your dog, so.
Okay, good. Um, okay. Yeah. I mean, some of that is like turning some one, one turn lanes into two turn lanes. Instead of having backed up on Academy or Stone is a real problem too.
Yeah, it's a major problem.
It's, I don't know why that right-hand lane on Stone isn't also a straight instead of just a right, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
What in the world?
There's a few, there's a few little things like that that don't, that don't make a ton of sense.
You're coming out of downtown and so there's, I think, traffic improvement downtown enforcement downtown. You know, I did a ride along the other day and I'm going to the Citizens Police Academy. And it's really like, it's very difficult for them to find somewhere to park and patrol for downtown areas, just because of how the built environment is. But we need enforcement for speeders and people who run red lights. Like if I see one more person run a red light in the city, like I straight up was like, can I, can I citizens arrest somebody? So bad.
It's a great idea. Also, the people that, that, that pull into the middle of the intersection, while the, while the light is green, but knowing that it's going to turn red while they're in the middle of it, that drives me crazy.
I mean, I'm forward if it's green and then you're yellow and you're going, but just sitting and sitting and sitting. And then, and then it's like this weird cluster. Also for downtown, I really believe this, if you own, if you live downtown, you shouldn't own a car. Like you shouldn't need to own a car, I guess is what I mean. If you want to pay for an extra spot, that could be revenue to the city. We have, you know, city parking that they can buy, you know, spaces for. But that would do a few things. Obviously take cars off the road, reduce traffic, better air quality, all those things. But think about how many stories of parking we have to build into any apartment now too. So that's extra height, that's extra skyline that's being taken up.
Right.
So I just, I'm a big believer in good transit and we've reached, we finally reached that density in downtown where we can really do some good transit planning and just make that more efficient. I would like to see instead of buses though, just utilizing our trolley system better. So right now they only go like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and during the evening mostly. And you know, during the day, I think that's, I think it's way more accessible than the bus personally.
Yeah.
My kids love to get on the trolley. I took my four-year-old.
It's been probably 10 years since I've used the trolley and it's mostly because I just never know, like, it's like, oh yeah, you gotta look it up on the app. And then it's like, there's, it's not clear where it is or when, and there's definitely a lot of room for improvement.
They do have a newer app, which is so much better than the old trolley app. It's called Transit. And I think that was, I think I agree totally. The old app was not good. And it just wasn't well-known. I think just using it as a small city efficient system and instead just have our buses, instead of having such a large footprint, which they have now, go out to each municipality, right? And then go out to the big employment centers. You know, my husband gets on 385 every day to go out to Duncan. He works for an automotive, automotive manufacturer. Like that's 20,000 people a day heading out that direction. Why we don't have park and ride? I don't know.
Yeah.
So things like that I think would benefit downtown a lot and also just incentivizing, like I said, those, those areas we want to grow, because small businesses are also kind of peeling out of downtown as rents get higher. And I, I hate that. Like I, I don't want to be somewhere else. I don't want to be King Street with all the same stores or, you know, I think what makes Greenville unique is our small businesses in our neighborhoods and our green space. And once we start losing those, which we are, you have these bigger box stores come in and then they eventually often move too. They can handle the turnover. They can handle the cost of high rent in our small businesses.
Yeah. I mean, my favorite place when, when we have people that visit, and it's not Greenville specific, but it's Mass General Store. That's like my favorite place to, to take people, you know? And OB Taylor's right next to it.
Absolutely.
I don't take them to, you know, no shade towards Lululemon, but that, like, that's not where I'm like taking people when they come to visit, you know?
Yeah. As it should it be, right? You can go anywhere for that. And if someone wants to go to King Street, they're going to go to King Street and they're going to go to the beach afterward. You know, in Greenville, I've also seen just like, you know, a painting of our, of our old murals, and just some of the like uniqueness and old buildings that I remember changing. And like, that's not a bad thing necessarily, but think about how many people took their engagement pictures in front of that Coca-Cola.
Right.
I mean, just things like that. I just, I don't want us to get kind of painted over. Like I feel like Charlotte has been, just feels very sterile.
Yeah. Yeah. That, that's a great point, because a lot of people like to say, we don't want Greenville to become the next Charlotte. But usually that's like density coded, you know, like they're, they're talking specifically about that they don't want people, more people coming here and us building more. But that's, that's a different slant to it and, and I like that. Can I ask you a personal question about, or not a personal question, a personal issue for me downtown? Where are the food trucks? Why do I have to go to a gas station parking lot to get a food truck? Why is it that any other cool city I go to, they have either a food truck district or they have food trucks easily accessible? Like we have incredible food trucks here in Greenville. If, based on, you know, where you live, I'm, I'm assuming every now and then you've been up to Piney Mountain Bike Lounge where they.
Oh yeah. Or the Tap. Yeah.
Yep. They have food trucks there all the time. Incredible food trucks. That is one of the most disappointing things for me about downtown Greenville. And I don't usually critique downtown, but that's a major criticism for me.
No, I, I agree. I agree. Um, yeah, I'm a big foodie person. So like, you know, I stake out the food trucks. I'm, I have a list literally that like I wanted back to try all of them. If the noodle lady is anywhere around, I'm, I'm at where she's at.
Yeah, I hear about, I, I've had hers once and yeah, incredible food trucks.
Yeah. I mean, besides those places and then maybe Grateful Brew, there's not a whole bunch. Some, some of their breweries will have some. No, I agree. There's actually a spot over here near my house. I've been trying to talk with the, the guy who owns it, because it's this, it's this front-facing on Wade Hampton, but they have this, all this backspace. And I'm like, it's really unactivated. And I'm like, man, it'd be so cool if that was like the circle of food trucks in the city, come and park.
Yeah, it doesn't even need to be downtown, even if it was just outside, you know? Somewhere where people could just go.
Yeah. I know there were some regulations that changed on a few years ago and there was a lot of talk about it. I don't know if that's the reason why. That's a good question.
State level?
No, I think it was local.
Okay.
It was local. But you know, they obviously come downtown for every like Main Street Friday and Downtown Alive on Thursdays. And then every, a bunch of city events, they do have food trucks. But outside of that, yeah, there's not really like a common space to park.
Yeah. And, and I feel like we have, I feel like, again, like whether it's, you know, like even like the Cleveland Park, for instance, or the zoo parking lot over there, you know, where they, they have the, I think it's Kona Ice and whatnot.
Kona Ice, yeah.
But there's always space there. It, it's just like, I see all these opportunities. I'm like, why? Why, why are we not maximizing this? Anyway, I, I don't want to get too, too off the rails.
That's what you're doing. Okay. I'll make a note real quick. Look at the regs.
Okay. Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm very curious. And I'd be curious if the regs were, if, if there was some kind of special interest group, you know, I don't know if the restaurants have a special interest group or not.
But you never know. Maybe if it's taking from businesses downtown, there's something related to that. Who knows?
And, but I mean, even, even like little food carts and things like that, you know, like that wouldn't, that it could just be like on, on the sidewalk. You know, we have some areas where there's supple, supple, I hate that word. Why did I use that? There are areas where there's like a lot of sidewalk space. And, um, you know, it's just like, why not? Like a little.
I do see Nomad Shaved Ice. I see them downtown sometimes just on the side.
You're right.
They're really small. It's like a tiny little cart, you know? It's kind of like Common Pops.
So anyway, that, that's just, that's again, that's a personal thing for me.
Yeah. Very cool.
So, all right, let's, let's, I, I know that you want to zoom out from downtown. I do as well. So what, what, in terms of like outside of downtown, what's something that you think that the past few years, whatever, however far back you want to go, the city has, has actually done well? What's something you're happy about in terms of what the city has done in, in recent years?
Oh yeah. I mean, definitely, you know, I, I worked at the county for eight years and, you know, I know there, everyone's like, oh, city, county, like we don't get along or we don't, you know, I, I've seen a lot of working together from the inside. And so I think that's been really great from like the Swamp Rabbit Trail to, you know, different events within the city. They both do use accommodations tax and support like cultural events and music and arts and like we, you know, the Jazz Festival. When I was first starting, I was like, oh, like what that thing in Green? Like can we, is that a thing? Like, and it's so great. Like it's super popular. I also really love, my favorite event probably is the Hampton Pettington Pork Fest. It's just like neighborhood done, neighborhood led. As someone who did neighborhood plans for a long time, I'm a big fan of like organically created events, you know, they're, they just come from people. It's not like forced in by any means from the top down. So yeah, I love that. I think we have lots still to do on connectivity, but we've also done a lot on connectivity too. Like you said, bike and ped. Our parks, we've got a lot of parks. I have two right, right near my house. So I think recreation is very strong for our city. So we're doing a lot well. And on the housing side, I've been part of that. At the Housing Fund, I was there for four years and we helped get, you know, $12 million towards affordable housing through a loan with the city, American Rescue Plan dollars. We helped stabilize rent for people who are facing eviction during COVID. Thousands of units, hundreds of homes, you know, so.
Do you ever get pushed? When you talk about that, do you ever, do people ever push back and, and, you know, show hostility towards like, well, we shouldn't be building so much?
Not normally if it's affordable product, right? I mean, in general, people understand the cost of living is here and like incomes are here. But I do think if you, it depends what terms use, because some people just have an idea of like affordable housing as, you know, public housing or tenements or things like that. And it's just very different than it was, I think in the 60s, 70s and 80s. So.
For sure.
You know, we, we work with like mixed income communities. So you'd have neighborhood or you'd have an apartment complex, or you'd have, you know, some duplexes and you wouldn't know who is a low-income tenant and who's not. Like it's designed to be good for everybody and where everybody thrives, instead of like concentrating poverty, which is never good.
You're right.
So, yeah.
So we've done that, we've done that before. We shouldn't do that again.
No, no. And it stings. I mean, I'll, I'll say, I think there's still some of that that goes on, just the way our, our federal tax credit system is written sometimes. We still have that. And obviously the cheapest land is going to be in areas that aren't, don't have higher market value, which tends to run, run along more segregated communities. So yeah, I think people hear affordability. I'd hear less of a pushback. What I really hear a pushback on is kind of like you were saying before, like I moved here. I don't want anybody else to move here. I'm anti-growth. I don't want any more people. And you know, I think as a planner, I know that we're going to have 200,000 more people here in our county in the next 10 years. And the city needs to healthily take on a good portion of that as to not ruin our environment, make our roads turn into Atlanta, like, you know, like have our housing costs like exponentially explode. And so I think, you know, there's a healthy balance and that's where planning really comes into account. Because you're looking at the road, you're looking at putting infrastructure in, you don't want to put the cart before the horse, which happens a lot. So.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. The, I believe nationwide that the, I can't remember if it was, it's, it's been bounced between 37 and 39, but I believe that the average first time home buyer is now 38. And I'm 39 years old. I've been a homeowner for, you know, for 15 years. It's, it's hard for me to believe that like I could have been renting this whole time or like living with my parents or something like that. So what?
Yeah. I think I was 26 when I got my first house.
Yeah. Which is, you know, that is traditionally the American dream and that's being robbed, people are being robbed of that. What are some things the city can do about that, that, you know, what, what's, what's some meat that's still left on that bone?
Yes. I'm so glad you asked. Um, so on the zoning side, we, a few years ago, we mapped some more missing middle housing within districts. I'm sorry, we, we created those districts as far as actually where we mapped them. There wasn't, there wasn't a lot. So getting out of that, you know, just duplex, triplex, quadplex, smaller garden flat apartments versus right now, we just have a lot of single family and a lot of multifamily, like a lot of larger over 100, 200 units. You want more of a healthy plan to have a different set of price points. And so that changes, that really needs some more zoning. I think streamlining our accessory dwelling unit process, we've only built 12 in the two years that we passed the development code update.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Why, why is that? Is that, is that just people, people aren't, people aren't seeing, like people aren't applying to add ADUs or?
No, I think, I think there's some, there's some, that yes, I think there's less builders who are doing that, just because it's a less bang for your buck kind of situation. And also the financing round, it can be tough, but Fanny and Freddie just passed some, some changes. So I think that'll allow for some more ADUs to be built. But there are also, were just some things within the permitting process and certain city regs. Like you have to face it towards the street and you have to, like orientation wise, and it's got to be lined up exactly with the house, with the setback and like stuff like that, that I think made it difficult.
Is that even for like, like areas that are like on an alley that wouldn't even be allowed to face the alley, but have to face like the main street?
Right. Right. So they're changing, at least we, you know, I and others have put in comments to change that. So I think that will change along with some other things for ADUs to make it easier. I would love to see tiny home subdivisions approved in the city. That's something I helped write at the county and we passed those. I think it's a big opportunity for affordable homeownership for people who can't enter the market now. Also along with affordable homeownership, the city owns a lot of land. And so putting that in a land trust or a mixed income neighborhood trust would provide both affordable homeownership for that kind of 8 to 120 AMI, as well as, you know, some rental for the lower AMI, that you can actually build equity while you rent. And so this is happening in other cities. I would love if our, our city could do the same with their, with their land. I think last would be to incentivize and to fund some of this, to incentivize, you know, use of vacant parcels that have been sitting for a long time, you know?
That are, that are privately or, or government owned?
They're privately owned, but like, kind of like, you know, go or get off the pot. Like they've been 30, 40 years. Like can we activate them? Can a city work with those private owners to try to make more happen? You know, it's, it's a tool we have at the local level, unfortunately.
Sure. So in, in terms of the, well, let me just say this, you're running for city council. And I probably need to clarify to my listeners that it, it can be easy to get all these different councils confused. I have criticized county council quite a bit on the show over the years. County, not city. It's pretty widely agreed that Greenville City, which is a council you're running for, has a better approach to housing than Greenville County has. And I think that there's a variety of reasons for that. Different voter base for one thing, different things that those voters are, are looking for. But I'm, I'm just curious from your perspective, do you perceive that? Do you? Um, but I'm, I'm just curious from your perspective, do you perceive that? Do you, what, what do you think is happening there? What's the dynamic?
I think the city has been a leader in this space, certainly. Um, you know, starting from twenty fifteen with our, our homelessness white paper and um, the creation of the housing fund I, I worked at, um, that's been emanated, you know, emulated across the state. But the work that I did at the housing fund was actually largely with the county, not with the city. So I was bridging that divide and doing so, we're able to, which I wouldn't have believed you if you told me 10 years ago that we would do any of these things. Um, and I think, I think it's also a PR thing. I think the county kind of has a bad rap, but really we've done a lot, like we passed ten million dollars of American Rescue Plan at the county towards affordable housing. That's gone into homeownership, um, affordable homeownership. We've, you know, got five million of general budget dollars also uh towards affordable housing. We passed a multifamily tax abatement, which I helped write along with two other council members to incentivize the private sector to enter into affordable housing, right? Outside of, you know, federal tax credits. And, you know, if you decide provide a certain percent of affordable, then you're going to get some subsidy back, some actual tax abatements. And so those, that is countywide, but it affected all the municipalities within the county as well. And so we've actually like done quite a bit, you know, it's kind of a teeter totter, like we might go back and forth with the county.
Right.
Um, but I think that's why it's so important I be in this role because I can help bridge that again with, with city and county, knowing their council members much better and having worked with admin for so long.
I know you've been endorsed by a couple sitting council, county council people as well.
That's right. Yeah.
Um, so were you involved when the U D O, when the Unified Development Ordinance was drafted by county?
Yes, I was.
So do you, do you have any things that you'd like to say about them scrapping it?
Oh, my gosh.
I had to, I'm sorry.
Now it's fine. That was such a big disappointment, honestly. Um, I can understand it to an extent because the new folks coming in, they're like, oh, this is a lot. But it was like for five years at least that we've been working on it. Um.
How much money was spent drafting that? Do you know off the top of your head?
Gosh, I don't know. I don't know. I would say at least two fifty to the consultants, probably more, probably half a million, if not more. Um, yeah, my, I ran the Greenville Affordable Housing Coalition at the time. And we put, we put our notes into the, to that development code to have some of the things I mentioned to you on the city side, also on the county side. The city has some affordable housing incentives, the county didn't. And so adding those in, um, just, just some changes. Um, having ADUs being legalized in the county is the biggest one. And really, um, that to me has been the hardest loss for this is because we just worked really hard.
Yeah.
To, to make a lot of that segue, but um, I still think there, it's still being talked about. I think what you'll see are piecemeal amendments instead. Um, so, you know.
What, what do you think? What, what, what do you think is the, outside of like ADUs? What do you think is the, just for someone that doesn't really know anything about the U D O, like what should they know about what was in it? And now that the county has essentially said, we're not acknowledging this anymore. What, what does that mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing was taking our code and reforming it to the way not, it wasn't, you know, we had Euclidean zoning still at the county and that's kind of the, the oldest, you know, way to think about zoning where, you know, you're separating industrial from farmland and you're making sure things are protected um and separated from each other. It wouldn't take us all the way up to, I'd say, what, what we have in the city, which is a form based code. And I think a little more easier to work with. The county is very big and it, it, it varies. It's not all urbanized, right? So, um, this would have really streamlined the process for builders, for developers, would have made housing more affordable, I think, just in terms of a process stance. Because when you have a code that you can actually work with and it's, you know, predictable and uh easy to follow as a builder or developer, then that, that translates to a savings.
And on the planning side.
Absolutely. Uh, staff, like you, you're, you're, you're not going back and forth constantly on different opinions. You have the land use matching up with the zoning is the biggest piece. There's a lot of things in there. Um, setbacks or like small little, you know, measurements that were off, depending which one you were looking at. So I think just in terms of uniformity for development is, is the bottom line. And there's a lot of other things around it, of course, like housing, like affordable housing and how we treat land use, preservation of land. I would have loved some more stuff for our trees. If I see another subdivision, just like take.
Yeah.
Take out all the trees. I mean, yeah, I would love.
It's a tough, it's a tough balance for, for the builders because they're getting told we need more, you know, we, we need more affordable products and, and the way I'm using affordable, it, it's still market rate housing, right? But we, we need that market rate housing to be as low as possible. So they're just, you know, doing the thing that's the cheapest, which is creating as much density as you can within a single family framework, but it's not very aesthetic. You know, the end result's not, not particularly aesthetic.
But you know, it can be like.
It can be, yes, you're right.
Cottage development and it's very well planned. I saw it go through the city. You know, many years ago, I was like, oh, we're moving. My husband's like, what? But you don't, you don't often see them done well, subdivisions done well. And so, yeah, I think we, you know, there's still, it's still a possibility, but yeah, it was a it's disappointing.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt. Um, you're not the only one that was, that was disappointed to see that happen. Hence why I have one of the many reasons why I have been um kind of talking about Greenville County Council. Cause there's been a lot to talk about the last, uh, the last few years.
Yeah.
So going back, pivoting away from county, um, well, well, actually not completely pivoting, but one thing I hear on the county level a lot, people really, really concerned about the infrastructure, right? As we, as we talk about these matters of building, development, it's a lot of, you know, well, we don't have the infrastructure for it. I heard someone say recently, you know, we don't have the, uh, uh, we're not going to have enough clean water. And that's in direct contradiction to what the water commissioner told me. So, so, you know, and there might be some, uh, some disagreements. Maybe people disagree with the water commissioner, I don't know. But
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm curious if you're hearing infrastructure concerns on the city level, particularly as it relates to, you know, these builders that are building and whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, I have heard of water sewer capacity in the city. There are certain areas that, you know, we've done the project a few years ago, the dig project. Um, that has, you know, messed with, you know, improved that. I've never heard anything about the water quality or like we won't have clean water. I've not heard that, but I've just heard from a capacity standpoint in terms of new development and water sewer capacity, especially on the east side of town. Um, and then in some of the older districts where, you know, we had special purpose districts where, you know, there were, they're old houses, right? And you've got clay pipes and you've got all the rest that needs to be kind of upfitted and changed over time, especially as we annex more of a county into the city. Um, we'll see more of that. So, yeah, I think water sewer capacities definitely. And there's some parts of town where they're just literally is not a lot of infrastructure period, like there, there never has been. Um, you know, think of Green Line Spartanburg and um area and some other areas where the city actually owns land that, you know, we could use some good infrastructure.
For sure.
But I'm a big believer in before infrastructure, you, you put in some plans for, you know, home repairs for seniors. Um, do some things like this land trust for affordable ownership. So you're not having as much displacement or impact as you bring infrastructure that way.
For sure. Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Um, so we kind of mentioned this earlier, mentioned about the, the state roads and whatnot and
Yeah.
Just, just from my personal opinion, I feel like there's been a lot of passing the buck between the county, the city and the state in terms of who's going to fix the roads. Of course, we know that the state has all, like more or less a decade backlog. Um, and that gets longer every year. Um, what, what needs to actually happen? City, you know, since, since you've got experience city and county level, what needs to actually happen for us to see like Spartanburg County, they're get, they've figured some things out on some of their roads. What's going on in Greenville?
Passed, they've passed their penny tax.
They passed, they, they did pass the penny tax that, um, that some of our, yeah, I'm not even going to go there. I've already, I've already talked about that. I've already talked about that. I, I, I got, I had a lot of people that got anger at me for, for being supportive of that. Um, and I'm typically a minimal tax person, but, but the money, the money has to come from somewhere, you know?
It does. And I, I've seen it up close. I, I, I work a lot in the Low Country, um, you know, and I have family down there and I've seen what the penny tax has done, right? For their roads. I mean, they've gone from complete garbage to like some of the nicest roads for state.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I, after seeing it up close, I, I can appreciate it more. So what we could do are a few things. I think the city, you know, we have a, a city lobbyist and there's, there's other cities we can work with. I think need to put pressure on the state around this because that penny tax passed in the city, but we don't have the, um, authority to enact it within the city because of precedence at the state level. They've gone ahead and said, even if you pass it within a municipality, you have to do it countywide. It's just silly. It's just silly to me. I mean, if we want, fix our roads, let us fix our dame roads. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
That's how I feel about it. Um, you know, I also think something we did at the county, which I really liked is we, and I've heard the city is starting to do this. Um, so I don't know, maybe they heard it on our campaign trail. I don't know. I like to think that. But we've been talking about how the county has been actually taking care and managing some of the state roads. They've just been volunteering to take them over because they're like, you're taking so long. We're not even on this list with this other road. Let's take it, you know, advantage of that and we'll monitor. Of course, you're going to have to use county taxes to do and pay for that.
Right.
And the same thing for the city. But I think the city could take on more uh of those roads that are so critical. Like I think about, I think I mentioned someone got hit on Pendleton Street. Um, I reached out to like the city engineer and I was like, this is like problematic, like what can we do? You know, and I was like, hey, yeah, we might, let's, we're going to apply for managing the street. It's like, yeah, okay, like that's, that makes sense.
Yep.
It costs money though. So I think one way, um, kind of like I mentioned with enforcement, you know, I think those things are all interrelated and if we get a local penny tax, that would be the best option to pay for this, those roads within the city that we pass through a penny tax in the city.
When you say locally, you mean county?
I meant like, uh, like if we can get the state to approve that change and get cities
Ah, I see.
Be able to pass the penny tax. Um, I don't know if they'd have to do a whole nother vote or if they just retroactively be like, you just approved it, like technically. But we probably have to have another vote.
Most likely, yeah.
Most likely, but then we could use those for those city roads that we find really problematic and people are getting really hurt.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, I feel like, I, I feel like is one of the biggest bugaboo's about the area. And there, there's just a lot of, there's just a lot of strange political grandstanding. I feel like that, that's just going on. Um, I, I actually know people that.
I think too, like the procurement process, I want to say is a little more simple at the city too. So I think you have less red tape around city roads, like the, the, the cost gets so inflated for state roads versus county and cities. So I think it's also just a say or say to taxpayers. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, you're fine. Yeah. No, I was just gonna say, there are some, there are some public figures that grandstanded against the penny sales tax that privately voted for it. And that, that was, when I found that out, I was not very happy.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I did, I did see, my friend said he saw a council member putting a sign out against the penny tax. And I think, I'm like, I'm pretty sure that's, you can't do that. That's illegal.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's an interesting one. Yeah, I don't, I, I didn't realize that.
But they didn't catch them on camera, so it meant nothing. I was like, dang, that's why you always take a picture.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of crazy. I, I think eventually the appetite will be there, you know, for people to accept, you know, hey, we're gonna have to, this is not going to get done without more money and nobody likes that.
I hope so. It's just so hard though, because the cost of living is just so.
That's the problem. And, and, and the, and the mileage, the mileage rate increase, I, I think, I think that all happening around the same time was really disadvantageous.
Absolutely. And, and we shouldn't have waited thirty years. That's just insane. Like that's, that's just coming back to bite us in the butt because we waited so long.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't know. I think cost of living is so high. I think it's just going to be very hard. Um, but something has to be done. Something has to be done.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I've got a couple more questions here. I know you're busy and, um, and, and then we can let you, let you get back on the trail. Um, but probably people don't realize just how much, actually, I'm going to let you just say this, people probably don't realize how much goes into a, a city council campaign. I have, you know, over the years, not on this show, but over the years, I have interviewed many city council candidates in, in other capacities. And people don't, probably don't realize that the city council campaign budgets oftentimes exceed six figures. Um, it's, uh, it's, it's, well, with Greenville City, not necessarily the smaller cities.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of a big deal. So
It is.
Why, why don't you, you know, let's, let's take a pause from the issues. What, what are you kind of doing right now? With regard to your campaign, but you're, you're talking to me right now, but with regard to your campaign.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so the end of this month, yeah, is, is the end of our, I think it's our third quarter. Um, it is, yeah, you're right, a hundred thousand dollars, I think is we're at currently, or I think we're just past that. We're probably at one fifteen. I think we're aiming for one twenty five. Um, it's, yeah, it's ridiculous. I mean,
It's crazy.
Just a lower middle class family, like, I don't know, with student debt and like
Yeah.
Two kids that, one, I pay way too much for childcare. The other one is in, is in elementary school, thankfully. Um, yeah, it's very interesting, you know, I don't come from money and I don't like live in that world. But it's really heartening. I will say, we have a ton of donors, like I think over six hundred, maybe seven hundred donors.
Wow.
Um, and the average donation is one fifty. You know, so that, I think that tells you a lot. Um, of course, there are large donors mixed in, but I think that tells you something and
For sure.
The kind of campaign we're running and um, yeah, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of phone calls. It's a lot of uh getting, going to people's houses and schmoozing and talking, um, which I always kind of drag myself to. And then by the time I leave, I love it because I get to meet new people and talk about what I care about. So.
Totally get that. There's sometimes this podcast is like that where it's like, ah, I've got to record, I've got to get the recording in before, you know, before Tuesday evening and, and then, and then I get going. Then I'm like, oh yeah, that, and then I finish it. I was like, oh yeah, that was great.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Um, but
I was gonna do it.
The grind of a podcast isn't anything like the grind of door knocking and cold calling.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's really over a year long process. Um, and I, I mean, many years before I'd say even, because I think it's good to like, you know, I've been very active in a community. I've, I've served on dozens of boards and leadership and chaired different groups um throughout the county. Probably even just separate from my work. So I think that goes a long way to, you know, you can't just like step in and be like, hey, I'm gonna like, you know, you should probably have like some idea of the issues and solutions and um have met and know the community well.
Absolutely.
Really, it's like a long time, actually, if you think about it.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So I want to pivot back to affordable housing for a second, but from maybe a little bit of a different perspective.
Yeah.
So in general, one thing I've learned over the years is, you know, as I've been involved in, in kind of the background of local politics. Um, is, is that for the most part politicians, when you talk about affordable housing, um, whether, whether to them or to, you know, just the general public, the first thing that comes to mind is either some form of subsidized housing.
Yes.
Or requirements placed on developers to have, you know, a certain percentage of their inventory be earmarked for people at certain AMI or area median incomes that you, you've already percentages, you've already referenced.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm always looking at, you know, different studies when it comes to housing affordability because that's, that's something that directly impacts my line of work. And I see a lot of studies that show that market rate housing, even luxury housing pushes down prices downstream. And I see a lot of studies that show that market rate housing, even luxury housing pushes down prices downstream. Um, in fact, this is, this is an interesting thing. I just covered on the show, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, how for the first time since the global financial crisis, market rate new construction is now cheaper than existing home sales.
Yes.
So now, now you can, on median, you can buy a new, a brand new house for $25,000 less than a, a, a current, an existing home. So.
Sure.
So I'm curious your feelings towards market rate housing and if you think we should be encouraging more of that in the city of Greenville.
Yeah. Oh yeah. I mean, we need all housing. Like I'm a big believer in more product, more inventory. We've seen in other countries, we even have just seen it in Austin. They build a lot of missing metal and at all different price ranges. And as a, as a way of doing that, they've stabilized rent.
When you say missing metal, just so that people kind of understand that, you're, you're talking about, you're talking about the in-between of single family and like high density, correct?
Exactly, exactly.
Like one to four unit?
It's a lot of in, yeah, infill products, you might think kind of in and, in and around neighborhoods. Um, I think the larger density forms, you know, make sense on your four, your six, your eight lane higher, you know, academy and things like that. Like that's where we need to bolster some growth. Um, and have it be more appropriate. And then with some greater, you know, economies of scale is how you sometimes can make that afforded affordability work. Better. Um, I do think though, the market is always going to take, you know, you're always gonna, it, it could be built by like a low-end, you know, person, but if it's right downtown, you know, they're selling for $800,000.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I saw Ryan Holmes the other day and it's like 750. I'm like, what?
Yeah, it could be shocking. And of course Ryan Holmes, you know, they do have, they, they have tiers of, of products as well that they sell. It's not, not one size fits all, but yeah.
It's true, it's true. They do, you know, it's, so I think it's, I think product is important and inventory is important. But do I think policy and public policy needs to help them, help the market? No, I think, I think it needs to help reduce regulation and increase the process. So in that way, it would help everybody, not just market. Um, all builders, all architects, I work with architects all the time that are like, these, these rules are just so like innocuous. Um, it's the little things like that, like really going overboard on design guidelines and things like that, that they've done on the west coast. And then like are now stepping back to be like, that was just too much. Actually, it's hurting housing affordability. I'm a big believer of that because I also want character, like, like we were talking about, I don't want everything to look the same. Ew.
Absolutely. Yeah. And, and there, there are some, um, some great opportunities on the middle housing, you know, with these, you know, with putting townhomes together that, you know, look like, you know, like when you're, when you're walking, for instance, in like an older city, you know, DC for instance, you know, there's so much character with all these little townhomes and whatnot. And nobody, nobody looks at that and like, ugh, you know, all this density.
Yeah, exactly. I think, you know, there are areas where the heavier stuff makes sense. Our CBD needs to definitely be taken on the most of the density. Um, I think by and large though, our policy and our, our main focus should be, you know, reducing regs to make affordable affordability better. Increase inventory. The market is always going to be there. Like people are moving in here, like speculative and from other places. We're going to keep making these top 10 lists. We're going to like, we don't, you know, I don't think we need to stress that. I do think we need to stress providing work, workforce housing. Our teachers can't live here. Our police officers can't live here. And if we want, if we don't want to go the same route, the Low Country is gone and which I see like constantly. Their restaurant retail workers, as soon as they can get a job somewhere else, close to home, they're out of here.
Right.
You know, and, and that's what makes Greenville great is just all of the unique businesses and the character and creativity and some of just like the best food. I mean, you know, you're foodie too. So, but that can't be, that can't happen if we're not supporting that workforce.
For sure. Absolutely. Yeah. It, it, that, that food is cooked, that food is cooked by those people.
Yeah.
And served by those people.
Yeah. And it's sad to me that like our, our, our nurses, our teachers, our, our police officers, fire, firemen and women, like, yeah, they can't afford to live here. That's, that's sad. I think that's very sad. I think a thriving community is one that's truly inclusive. And there's something for everybody.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. And, um, that's something, you know, I, I think that a lot of the, the conversation right now that we're hearing locally is people aren't realizing that. Cause I, I know that, that what I hear a lot of times is there's a lot of appetite for more commercial development, for more stores, for more restaurants, you know, for, for things that benefit me, right? I'm, I'm already a homeowner, you know, so what, so I don't care about affordability for homes. I just want more places to shop and, and consume, right? Um, that's the sentiment I keep hearing. And then you ask people, well, but where are those workers going to live? And then, oh, and by the way, you know, you have a, a 12-year-old. Did you know that the average first-time home buyer is 38 years old now? Do you want them living with you for the next 26 years?
Absolutely.
You know, and, and these, these are those sorts of questions. And, and this is where we start to get into the discussion of, of, you know, you mentioned regulation. I have, I have a property, um, on Hampton Avenue in downtown.
Yeah.
That, um, I, I bought that was in really bad condition when I bought it a few years ago and, and we rehabbed it and everything. And, you know, getting in a different city inspector every single time, they, one inspector will say, you need to do these things. And another one will come in and say, actually, that's not important. You gotta do all these other things. And then you'll get a third one and it's like, no, actually it was, and it's just like, we, you know, like get it, sometimes getting a, a certificate of occupancy is like a marathon. Like it's, it's a livable house, but, but it's not livable. But like the city or the county doesn't consider it livable.
Same for commercial. They have some of the same struggles. It's, it's.
So, so what can be done about that?
Yeah. I mean, the form-based code that we had from two years ago, I think was supposed to change and help some of that. There's still a lot of kinks. And that's why they're doing this update, um, just over these next few months to kind of fix some of those things. I think, you know, that.
Just feels like, it just feels like me when I'm in this situation, I have, I'm literally at the whim of, of the inspector. And if I, if I get, you know, we had one during this whole process, one guy that came in and literally he had just, he was a commercial builder until he became a city inspector. And, um, and he, he forced us to, to do commercial code for a residential property. And we had nothing, we had no recourse. There was nothing we could do to push back on that.
Some of that, some of that is state level, like in terms of whatever, you know, the structure, if it was a townhome or duplex or in our zoning code at the state, we are treating some things and highs, treating them at a higher standard of a construction versus them really being that missing middle product. Why are they held to the same standard as a large multifamily? Um, and so part of it is state, but I think there are some things locally that I've heard from folks that could be changed to, to, to your point, to like lessen that, that same, you know, litmus test of construction as a commercial. But it's because you're renting and I'm sure they were like, oh, well, it's going to fall. It's commercial like.
It was just, it was, it was just one inspector. The, the other ones that didn't have that commercial background, didn't bring the commercial code into it.
Yeah. So you're just getting all these opinions and it's totally different.
Exactly. That, that was the, that was the whole problem is that it was just like.
Wow, wow, wow.
One step forward, two steps back. Um, so.
Yeah.
I just wish that we could, you know, just, and I'm, I know I'm not the only one, that there was just some, some kind of reform that could happen on that level.
Yeah. I think that's some, some takes some diving down into the weeds. Um, but I'm that kind of person. That's what I like. So, yeah, I look, look forward to that.
Well, that's great. Last question. Um, this is just kind of a catch-all in case we missed something. What are, is there anything that you're focused on? Or anything you just want to share with the audience, um, that, that you're doing or that you want to do or anything like that, that, that we've not talked about up to this point?
Yeah. I mean, we've talked about, I think transit a little bit in housing.
Yeah.
Um, a little bit on trees. I would love our city to use our $3 million we're sitting on for tree fees. I helped write that ordinance and you know, replanting what we lost in Helene, going ahead and getting rid of the dead trees, um, that ahead of storms, you know, so we're not kind of sitting the same, sitting in the same place. We have a hundred-year-old oaks that are aging out all over the city. So getting ahead of that.
A lot of those were the ones that, that were compromised during the storm too.
Bad. Um, and you know, I see it. I've seen this city leaning, leaning on some properties and they don't clear cut. And then some other ones they do. And I just feel like if it's within that setback zone of the development plan, please God, just do what you can to save those trees. Like maybe that's, I mean, if they're dead, doesn't something else are diseased?
Sure.
But that's utility cost, that's quality of air, that's, you know, providing a buffer of sound for neighbors. And I wish we would do some more on that. Um, last, our, our big one is childcare. Just through some zoning changes, we could have that be more accessible in our city. Uh, right now it's a childcare desert. So. Oh.
We got some, we got some, uh, animals in the background. That's awesome.
Um, so I think we could do more around just making that zoning more friendly and also like the after-school and the summer camp programs that we have now through the city. They're overly subsidized. So that's actually, I think, kind of visibly irresponsible. Like why am I paying the same as somebody who makes $20,000 a year? I could pay more of my fair share and we could have more spots for kids like we used to have pre-COVID. And maybe even open, have some more funds left over to open up for age under four, which is the hardest to provide in our city. And that's economic development. That's like gets people to work.
Yeah.
You know, it, it could be a big boost in our city.
That's great. Well, Tina, thank you so much, uh, for taking the time to come on the show. Um, I will, I'll ask you for whatever contact information it is that you want to include in the show notes. So for those of you that are listening or watching, Tina, I'll put some information in the show notes where you can find out more about Tina, about her campaign, reach out to, to her. Um, or if you have a campaign manager, um, however you want to handle that. Like I said, I'll get with you after, after we're done recording here. Uh, but thank you so much. And, and, and I really hope, you know, these next few weeks are going to be a grind, but, but I hope the campaign goes well for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Stan.
All right. That is it for today's episode. Thank you guys so much for listening or watching on YouTube. Again, my contact information is in the show notes. Tina Belgie's contact information will be in there as well. And, um, just a reminder, as always, please like, rate, review, subscribe, all of those good things. We will talk to you guys next time.